After that, we're going to then move to the conversation that wants to be brought forward by Mike Ryan, okay? And then we'll go into other items. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So this was an item that we had held over so that we could have a look at Golden Town Residential Communities' financial statements. We have Chris here from Collins &amp; Barrows who's going to give a high-level look at it. I just want to thank the Board of Golden Town, too. They passed these financial statements at their board meeting on Tuesday night for us.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome, Chris.
Well, thank you. So, yes, so as Ann Marie says, I'll just very briefly give a really high-level overview of the current financial situation as at December 31, 2017. Here are the financial statements. First of all, we have our independent auditors' report.
Chris, could you speak into the mic?
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So, first page of our financial statements are our independent auditors' report, and I would just like to point out under the opinion that we have issued an unqualified audit opinion and that it is our opinion that these financial statements present fairly the financial position of the organization. I'd also like to draw your attention to the basis of accounting, that these financial statements have been prepared to be compliant with the accounting policies as dictated by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. Page two and three of the financial statements are the statement of financial position. They give a snapshot or a picture of where the organization was sitting at the end of December 31st. So, the highlights here, under their assets, is that they have cash resources available for general use, there's no restriction on these resources, of $587,000. These funds were deposited in the Canadian Bank account. The organization also has restricted cash investments of $1.4 million. These funds are currently invested in GICs with various interest rates from .67% to 3%, and a portion is invested with Philip Hager's and North in their social housing investment The final major asset over the organization is the undepreciated cost of the land building and equipment for the three residential rental complexes. These are Golden Town Manor, Albert Place, and Victoria Village. The liabilities of the corporation are $3.8 million. The major liability is the two mortgages on the properties. Currently, these mortgages are rates, interest rates of 1.01% and 1.99%. And the organization has net assets restricted of $1.4 million and $640,000 of unrestricted net assets. Page three of your financial statements show what the restricted net assets were. These are assets that are restricted for capital and capital replacements at the three applicable housing units. So Golden Town Manor has money set aside of $134,000 and $37,000 respectively, and Albert Place and Victoria Village has $1.3 million in unrestricted net assets available for those uses. Finally, we have on page five and six are the statement of operations for the year for the two organizations, or for the organization. Page five details the operations for Golden Town Manor. Golden Town Manor is a unit complex with approximately 22 units. About half of these are rented, market rent units, and about half are rent gear to income tenants at this particular time. Their major source of revenue is rental income of $160,000. They do receive subsidy. For total revenues, $182,000 for 2017. They had expenses of $186,000 for a small operating loss for the year of $4,280. Historically, their operations are, have been very stable and are generally close to The last statement I will talk about is the statement of operations for Albert Place and Victoria Village. Albert Place is a 25-unit building, approximately 30% of which is currently rented to rent gear to income tenants, and Victoria Village has 63 units and virtually the entire building is rent gear to income. These complexes received subsidy last year of $572,000. Their other revenues, major revenue source, was rental income, for total revenue of $951,000. Their expenses are detailed below, expenses of $917,000. The major differences in the amortization and interest in long-term debt is due to the renegotiation of one of the mortgages during the year. So, again, at the end, for the year, they had excess of revenue over expenses of $34,000, and as well, their operations are fairly stable from year to year as well. I don't think I'll go into the rest of the statements, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Appreciate the information. Not a question so much for the presenter, but is there some reason that we couldn't have at least had a printout of this? Because I started out, you know, trying to keep notes, and it's a high-level, brief, and I'm not going to be able to get my head around this until I actually have it in front of me and put together the notes and...
I will address that in part. Unfortunately, I apologize for not getting these statements to the county sooner. However, the Board did just meet on Tuesday to approve the statements, and we are precluded from releasing those statements until such approval is obtained.
And I certainly appreciate your doing what you can, but, you know, we could have had at least a printout in front of us, make the notes on the page. I'm just making an observation that it's challenging.
Yeah, I understand that, and it's duly noted. Thank you, Chris, for coming.
Okay.
We'll ask Ann Marie, no further questions. Counselor McKean.
Thanks, Warden Halliday. I don't know whether my question would be to the presenter or to Mr. Wepler. And my question is, seeing, and as said with Ann Marie, I'm kind of along the same lines, I really would have liked to have had this at least a day ahead, to have really digested the numbers. I find it problematic for somebody like such as myself to take a look at this at this level and try to make a decision on this. But I guess my question is, I took a look and it flashed up on the screen that there was somewhere in $3 million of liabilities, and I think a million four in, you know, cash or reserves. To Mr. Wepler, I guess I'll ask the question, I know they're putting him on the spot, but he likes that. Where will the county be with this in 10 years' time?
That's a really good question. Just based on the review of the statements, and I did speak with Chris and Ann Marie and Mary Lou and I, you know, looking at these financial statements, their operations are their revenues and expenses, they're meeting their budgets and they're doing that. They have mortgages there, we'll be taking on the mortgage, but the subsidy is coming from the county to pay for those mortgages. So, the big question is about then, I think, reserves and what the buildings will be like. And I think Ann Marie's staff have looked at these buildings, and they're in good shape and stuff, but until, I guess, until I had a really good building condition assessment, I'd be guessing somewhat, but I'm taking from what their condition assessments have been in the past and what our staff have gone and viewed, these buildings to be in really good shape. And I think at the end of the day, you really don't have a lot of decision here of if the Board is going to do what they're going to do, that this would become a county asset anyway. But in what I'm seeing, these look in good shape, and the financials are in good shape. There's unrestricted funds here at the bottom of line, they're not debt-ridden, and so that's my opinions of what I can see.
Thank you for that, and I want to put this motion on the floor, unless, John, you want to talk to the statement.
Just to that, I do believe that there is the option of just taking over, the county taking over it as, on a temporary basis, as opposed to long-term. I think that's...
Within the discussion that we have to have on the floor, okay? Thank you for that. So, I'm going to put the motion on the floor. Thank you, Chris, for coming, and Ann Marie can handle the rest. So, that the report, HDR CWO 318 regarding a proposed transfer of Golden Town Residential Company assets to Gray County be received, and that staff be directed to carry out the process to transfer such assets to the county of Gray. So, I want that on the floor. Counselor Wright, Counselor Greenfield. Ann Marie, you want to talk about your report?
Certainly. Just some of the things that we did look into, and I think when we're looking at our nonprofits, of course, we do want to keep these units as affordable and as some of our market rents. And I'd like to point out that the market rents are very attainable, too, in some of these places. For instance, you know, a one-bedroom for that $900 mark in Meaford is quite attainable also. We, as the service manager, are responsible for keeping a certain number of affordable units within, and these 109 units certainly go towards that number. I think that Golden Town has done an excellent job of managing the properties. We did have a building condition assessment done in 2010 and through 2014, in which it's the same building assessments that we base our capital repairs on, and our facility staff did have a look. We do operational reviews, too, so we, as the service manager, are into all of our nonprofits every two to three years in order to look to make sure that they are following building code, or building codes, that there's no violation, fire code, making sure that there's maintenance logs, all of that, and Golden Town has always been one of our leaders in that. We've also talked to the staff there, so the staff are aware of what's going on. The staff will be retiring at the same time, so there will be that ability for us to provide some sort of savings when it comes to staffing. We will certainly need to provide a custodian there, but a lot of the administrative things that Golden Town does right now, we also do in-house here, so we will be absorbing that in. And I also think that there's some savings when it comes to insurance and snow plowing, things that we do as a tender for all of our buildings would be also included, so we would be looking at probably a better price there. Some of our next steps, if the decision is to transfer, would be, obviously, we would be looking at working on a list of equipment, we'd be providing a communication plan for tenants and notices, and we would also be looking at what that operations looks like in the interim. We would be contacting Housing Services Corporation to look about the transfer of assets when it comes to the capital dollars, and also, of course, looking at insurance and mortgage also.
Thank you for that. Now, it's time for questions. Yes, Counselor Adell.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I was just wondering, is this a third-party assessment? Are these engineers, or is it Gray County performing this, so that we do get an assessment back and it's stamped, and this is, so if anything happens in five years from now, we can go back and say, "We have documents here to say otherwise"?
So, in all of our buildings, including our nonprofits, we have a third-party committee to do a building condition assessment, and they give us how long a roof might last, how long a whatever might last. And we take that, and then we provide, we look at our capital and what we have and what our next jobs would be. So, for instance, in our own capital for our buildings, and same with what Golden Town does, it might say that the roof needs to be replaced in 2018. So, we would have a look at that roof, and if we're not having any problems with it, da-da-da-da-da-da, then we would put it off to 2019. If it looks, yes, that it should be, then we would certainly plan for that. So, Golden Town has kept up with what those recommendations have been throughout for the, from the building condition assessments, and my facility staff, who would be our staff that would do the same for our buildings, went and had a look, and they just looked at the next 10 years and had a look at what those building condition assessments said, since the last one was from 2014, and they agreed with what was said in it.
So, a supplement question, then. Did you say it was 1.5 million in reserves?
So, they have 1.2 million, I believe, in the one. I can go up here and have a look.
I think it's my reason for asking would be, if a new roof needed to be put on, we know the costs of these type of buildings, how much the roof is going to go, and if the elevator were to fail. So, you're talking huge expenses here, and is there enough in reserves at the present time to cover those expenditures?
There is, and we also had a look, and their roofs have just recently been done. There's only one, and I believe it's Golden Town, and I think it was in my previous report, that it was the only roof that has not been done within the last five or six years. So, we are ways out for roofs. The individual family homes are townhomes, and so I believe that they have been keeping up with maintenance on those, too. So, when we looked at big-ticket items, there weren't a lot of huge, big-ticket items that were due in the BCA in court in the next 10 years. But certainly, there will be things, the parking lot does need to be done, there's some things like that.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Supplement again. How old are the townhouses, then?
So, the townhouses, I believe, were built in 1980, I apologize, it's in my previous report, 80, I think they were 81, 86, somewhere around there, and the other houses were built in the early 80s. So, they're 81 and I believe 86, so they are younger than what our own stock.
It's just because the town of Collingwood had affordable housing, townhouses, and they found that it was too expensive to renovate these or even retrofit these, and so they've torn them all down, and now they've got a huge expense in rebuilding. So, that's where I'm concerned, is, you know, who's going to pay for this if Gray County were to take it over, and in 10, 20 years from now, we have to do a rebuild. Those are just my comments.
Yes, Counselor McKean.
Thank you. And Ann Marie, maybe you can't answer this, but it appears, you know, at first brush, that it's fairly well-managed and that there's a fair few assets. And I guess my concern is that, you know, that the Board, we were unable to get a new Board in place for this. Can you comment, is the reason that it's hard to get new Board members, what is the liability for a Board member in this type of thing? Is that one of the reasons why it's hard to recruit new Board members?
The liability would be, as in any other liability at the Board, and there's insurance, obviously, insurance towards that. Social housing in general, across the province and certainly across the county, it's difficult to get people to sit on the Board. It's just not one of those, I guess, volunteer positions that people are interested in. All of our Boards, we're very lucky in Owen Sound, we have a few very strong Boards, but when it comes to our house in Durham, our properties in Durham, properties in Newsted and whatnot, they're all having the same problem, is attracting those Board members. This Board actually didn't want to attract a new Board members, they wanted to either pass it on to somebody else. They didn't want to put in that time, I guess, or that recruitment, and I think a few years ago, they did try to recruit, knowing that this was coming net soon, in a few years, that people were going to want to retire, but like the rest of us, didn't really have good luck at attracting people that are interested in affordable housing. I think now, and hopefully now, with more education and more in the spotlight about the need for housing, that that will change. I also want to mention, too, that if these 109 units do go, by the wayside, we have to rebuild them anyways. So, that's the other part of it. I think that with a mortgage ending on one of them in two years from now, those 20-some units, if someone else were to be in control of those, they can walk away and say, "No, we're going to all put all of these in a for-profit now," or "We're going to do whatever." And if that happens, then the county has to rebuild those units. So, I understand about cost, and I understand about risk, but regardless of what happens, we are still on the hook for that same amount, and that's legislation, and there's nothing that we can do about that. And we have a need. We know that we're crying for housing, whether it's affordable or attainable in Gray County.
That's good. Yes, John?
Well, thanks very much for that explanation, and I think that I see this as a perfect opportunity for some people with some great level of expertise, and I would think that it'd be a great opportunity for former Wardens to sit on these Boards.
Are you speaking as Counselor Barford or a former...
Speaking as Counselor Barford, not as a past Warden, that's for sure on this one. Just, I guess, a question, and I apologize if the information has already been out. Certainly, I don't have a problem supporting the first half of the motion, we're receiving the information. Most cases, when you are going to take something on, you have a business plan or a business case for it, and I guess, as I say, I apologize if that's been presented and I haven't seen it, but is that something that we could look at to help Council make its decision moving forward?
So, certainly, I guess with the transfer of assets, it really is an auditing purpose. So, I mean, the auditor will dissolve their corporation, and we would transfer that over. So, really, it's a financial matter, is what it is. Certainly, we would be looking at doing a sub-search of the property, we would be looking at getting an agreement together, and I know that we can do that in-house, and then it would be a matter of just that transfer of property. So, I mean, there is that aspect of it, so there's certainly your financial transfer that has to happen, your legal transfer, and also the staff and tenants. That's going to be one of our main larger issues, too, is making that smooth transition over for staff and tenants. I can certainly outline that in a document for you, I did talk to that in my last report. If there's something more than that that you would like to see, like a step-by-step checklist of what's required, I'm not quite sure what else I can provide.
You have a more definitive question?
No, as I say, the step-by-step, I think, might, from the comments that have been heard earlier, I think might be an easier sell for Council that way.
I think we have to also remember, the federal government requires us to manage 1,251 of these type homes, so if we don't make this process, we're obligated to, you know, to do something to replace these homes, so this looks like the least-cost option at the present time, so... Yes, any other question? Counselor Echols?
I haven't been on housing information for a little while on the committee. Obviously, we've gone to committee as a whole, so it's not as close. The federal government on mortgages that are on these properties has, there's so much transfer money from the federal government to pay those mortgages. Is it still the same that once the mortgage is finished, the federal government's transfer payments cease?
On the federal ones only, and so Golden Town itself is the only federal one, the other one are provincial. So, the Golden Town one, and I think they receive, and the subsidy was mentioned in there, it's about $22,000, $23,000 a year is all that they receive. So, that would finish as soon as the mortgage does, but it is the mortgage amount. As for the provincial ones, we inherited that mortgage payment when they were downloaded. So, the provincial ones were already paying that subsidy and that amount. So, the subsidy that they receive is county dollars. There is a little bit of money we receive from the province for the overall units, for all of our own units and the other, but it's very small.
Right. So, I guess where I'm going is, and it was a discussion probably 10, 15 years ago, I'm dating myself how long I've been around, that the federal government continue those, and to the point that Counselor Adell had made, that they continue that transfer payment on the mortgages when the building, to be able to put into reserve when the buildings need to be repurposed and/or tore down and rebuilt again, but it's still the same way. It's been a debate that's been going on and hasn't happened.
Well, as part of the National Housing Strategy, there were some funds that were announced, we haven't got details on it yet, but as one of the streams of the funding was actually to continue funding. So, the funding that the province has slowly been doing this until we get to zero, has been, there has been money set aside. We just don't know what that's going to look like yet, but certainly, that's what's happening. And in a lot of other areas, too, where the service manager, so the mortgage ends, and if that, if the nonprofit decides to still provide housing, what they're doing is they are still providing that funding for them, but they're saying that they have to put it into capital, and that's what's going to happen in the next two to 10 years. All of our nonprofits, their mortgages are going to be finished. So, it'll be up to us to negotiate with them to say, "Please stay and please provide some affordable housing units," and what does that look like? So, this is, for the first time, I'm coming to you, but I'm going to be coming to you 10 more times in the next 10 years with a similar. So, this is the way the province set it up, that when those mortgages were done in those 30 to 35 years, that people had the ability to walk, but the service manager is still responsible for all of those, and we have 493 units like that. So, we are going to, in the next 10 years, have to figure out what that looks like, and this is one of our first ones.
Thank you.
So, if I could, it's just interesting that we had the Small Housing Forum in Meaford, so the expectation is, we don't have the money to rebuild anything as to what it is on the footprint, but we'll put up something very small that Meaford is putting forward for these houses. Correct, Counselor Clump?
It's, no comment needed. No comment needed. Counselor Fosbuck?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you very much, Ann Marie. One of the concerns that I have is we're having, it seems that we're getting new information, and certainly, the forum last Friday was very informative, and it touched on this and broader related issues. And so, in addition to my desire to see the financial information attached to a report from our Director of Finance with the short and long-term implications of this, I'm also very interested in better understanding what our options are in terms of affordable housing across the county, and not necessarily just the pockets that we currently have this. So, I feel that this decision is premature. I really think it's an important topic. It couldn't have been made more clear on Friday, if anybody is doubtful. So, I don't know if you have any comments, but my view at this stage is, I really would like to see more information, financial, as well as the impact to the areas within, across the county, that are perhaps not as well-represented as others. Is this an opportunity for us to review from that perspective as well?
So, I think what I'm looking at right now with Golden Town, it's an opportunity for us to maintain housing in Meaford, but yes, certainly, we know that one of our main goals, as part of our 10-year housing and homelessness plan, is to sustain the housing that we have and to create new affordable housing. So, I think that there are opportunities out there for both, and this is certainly part of sustaining what we have.
Well, what we're really saying is, they're related, but they don't, they're not linked here at this time, and if you'd like to bring forward a notice of motion sometime to explore affordable housing, that would be something that we could entertain, but Golden Town is not part of our affordable strategy at this time, it's part of our social housing projects.
Yes, and we do have our 10-year housing and homelessness plan review, which is coming up, so that'll be in the fall. We'll be holding consultation sessions and certainly looking at options, and that's something that we will have to have completed by June of next year, so we'll be starting that this fall. There'll be certainly opportunity to explore options.
Thank you for that.
If I could just follow up, Mr. Warden?
Yes.
So, on your report, it states that the Board of Directors did approach other nonprofit to transfer ownership and operating of the nonprofit, but the proposal was declined as the nonprofit is currently expanding. That would be the nonprofit that was approached is currently expanding?
Yes.
So, again, I wonder why there isn't more, you know, and I don't understand it as well as you do, why there isn't more interest in this, but, you know, a related question would be, if there are separate and distinct properties, do we have to consider all of them? Can we consider some of them? I'm just, I'm not feeling as well-informed as I'd like to be in order to support this motion.
So, all three properties belong to Golden Town Residential. Two of them are attached to the long-term care, so that would be our two seniors' buildings, and then there is a complex of townhomes. So, they are all under Golden Town Residential, and all of, that's what I'm proposing right now, is that we look at them as a whole. All of them go towards our service delivery standards, so they are all part of that 1,251 units that we have. And we don't, we have a lot of very small nonprofits, the majority of our nonprofits are around that, you know, 20 to 25 units, and we have a couple that are larger, Golden Town being one of them, and the other nonprofit in which they approached. But that other nonprofit right now is building and doing a lot of other things, so this was just not in their capacity right now with the staffing that they have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, John?
Thank you. I'm just going back, and I don't want to steal Counselor Barford's thunder, but I'm wondering if the question shouldn't be, shouldn't be split? And, you know, we could split it and receive the information, and with the second one, pending a business plan being presented, you know, because we just, this new information, I don't know how, you know, the auditor report, I don't know how much you've had a chance to look over, Ann Marie, so I'm just wondering if we shouldn't split this question up?
Yeah, okay, so that's, the CA was going to comment on that.
Can I just ask a question of clarification regarding the...
Can I just ask a question of clarification regarding the idea of a business case? Are you wanting us to provide additional information on the assume versus replace question? Or are you asking us to do or provide a, more of a financial forecast to the best of our ability around operating revenue and expenditures? I'm just, I'm just not clear what work it is that you are asking for.
Yes, Joe, go ahead.
Well, I think it encompasses it all. I think it needs to be, some to do with replacement and short and long care. But, I mean, staff have indicated that there's supposed to be efficiencies by the county taking it over, and I think that that could be rolled into it to see just how much, like if it's $10,000, do we really want to be bothered with? And if it's $100,000, should we be considering that? I think that that scope is what we need to take a look at, as to what the efficiencies we can, Gray County's ownership of these buildings will achieve.
I believe I did have some numbers in my last report, looking at it, we would be down one staff person, which would have been about $50,000 and whatnot, but...
To reread that report, Joe, it's...
Provide further information.
Provides a lot of information. Counselor Barfoot?
Well, I was going to say, I think that what the CEO has alluded to is like a financial forecast would sum it up, I think, and what Counselor McKean is saying. We don't want to make this a labor of love to do all this, redo everything again, but I think pulling those points out and saying, here's what it's looking like into the future as far as what our commitment would be is what I'd be requesting, so.
Thank you for that. But also, if you read the report that Anne Marie presented, there was a lot of information in there that looked into the future, and it looked into some cost savings and looked, also reviewed our obligations and gave us maybe some options. Those options still exist if we take on the assets. There was option one and option two. Those still exist. But we do have to move the facility over to our side. There's an obligation. I'm not sure about timing, so is, what's the timing event here?
Well, timing is tight. I know the board wants to be retired by the end of September, but if that does get, you know, delayed a little bit, it does. But certainly, I think just even for, I think even just for the tenants and whatnot, too, we'd like to give them an answer soon, too, because they know that this is happening, and they think, they know, they're in limbo right now, too. So, I think that we owe them that. Certainly, we can pull together whatever else is needed. I guess if the decision was not to go ahead, then I could certainly look at what it would cost us to rebuild 109 units, too.
Okay, so, that's something that could be done. I'm not recommending that. Counselor Wright, and then Counselor Fosbrook, and then whoever else is after along that line.
Thank you very much. I think that you can read beneath, between the lines that it was the Owensown Housing Authority that took a look at this, at this Golden Town, and this was a few months ago, and we are, we have a board, a housing authority board in Owensown that looks after many, many units, along with the county, and we work very well together. But, you know, our board is made up of people who have been there for 20-some years. In fact, the chair of our board has been there for 30 years. And it's not going to go on forever. I can tell you that right now. And it's very, very difficult to get people to serve on that board. And it's, we have two county councillors that sit on it. That's why I'm on that board. But other than that, it's very difficult to get people. And there's a lot of work that is done on these boards. And right now, we are building 22 new units with the help of the county and are going to build eight more. We're starting Phase Three, which is going to be 28 more units. And we did look at the Golden Dawn seriously, I can tell you. We went over and went through the buildings. We had tours, we had meetings over there, we looked at financial, we had the city manager over there with us. We went through everything, and there was, it was absolutely a wonderful opportunity for us to take that over, we felt. But we just can't handle it. That's, the long and the short of it is that we, as a small board of six people, cannot handle the extra work. And so, we had to say no. And all we could say was, we sure hope that the county steps in and takes over, because this is a wonderful opportunity. The people that live over there, there's a need over there, and these people need these homes. And it would be a really, a shame if this board was dispersed and these homes disappeared. I'm quite sure Meaford would be most upset and discouraged if something like that happened. So, I just think it's a great opportunity for the county. And I, I mean, there are concerns. Yes, we can understand these more, this is more responsibility for the county, but we have that responsibility already. We've got homes in many of our communities, and we're going to need more. And I understand the federal government now is going to release, how many more thousand dollars for public housing? It was just announced that there's another big program coming out. So, if we have this, we're already one step ahead. And it's just, to me, I certainly hope that this is supported, because it is a good cause and it is, it is a good deal. This is a, this place, and where it sits, it's in Meaford, is a lovely area. It's a nice area to drive in, and it's a nice community, and it just seems to fit in there, and it's a great community, and I'm not building up Meaford too much, I hope, but it, it's a good, it's a good proposal.
Thank you, thank you, Arlene, for that discussion. Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just want to add that, should council agree that, you know, a financial plan, business plan, some additional information is warranted to come forward, I would add that the building condition assessments would be of interest as well. I noted that the report from the last meeting did not have any attachments, and if we have that information, I would be very interested in seeing that as well. Thank you.
I think that's all part of the process. I think we do have options, and I think before we lock and load on any option, we have to do some more exploring. The only quick question would be, if the county takes over these facilities, will new leases be required for each of the tenants?
I'm not sure about that.
Okay, that's, yeah. That was something that was discussed this morning, so, not that I'm really looking to it, it was just a...
I would assume probably.
Something that was floating around. Okay. I'd like to have the motion, unless there's any other questions. Yes, Counselor Echols.
Would, I'd just like to put forward an amendment, not to split the motion, but just at that Gray County, the proposal, H-0318, be received, and that staff be directed to bring back a report at the next council meeting, May, no, April 26th?
I can do the May one. Unfortunately, I'm not able to make the next one.
You've got all kinds of staff that stand in for you, Anne Marie. I don't think, I think what I, the amendment would be, just to bring back a report on the timelines of the transfer and the projected, if I'm getting the feeling right of council around here, the projected capital upgrades that may be required, with some of the new information, obviously, that we've got from the auditor and from our own billing assessment reports coming forward. So, my amendment would be that staff be directed to bring back a report on those two topics, on the capital investment...
The timelines.
For the next 20 years, and the timelines of, I think one question was, on the leases and those types of, before the transfer of assets is accepted by the county.
Okay. Okay. Have a look at that motion as it's coming up on the screen, Counselor Echols, and then ask for a seconder, and then comments from Counsel, are you seconding, Counselor Bell, or?
I can, Mr. Warden, with a question to be asked also.
Yes, is that okay?
Yep, that's fine. I was going to second that.
Well, Counselor Ardell was before you, so allow her to be on record as seconding it, but that doesn't mean that you can't ask your question, sir.
Thank you, sir.
For discussion.
Duly moved and seconded now, okay. Just a question. I guess if this is going to come back to the next meeting, so that's two weeks from now...
It can't. We can't get it, we can't do this work and do it properly before the next meeting. It'll have to come back in May.
That leads to my next question, that comes back in May, so it would not be approved till the end of the month. Is that enough time, Anne Marie? Or is this going to cause angst among the tenants who you want to get notified? And does that work for your timelines? That's what I'm asking.
I think that if we come back in May, definitely May would have to be it, if we're going to have to do a detailed BCA report and whatnot. The report's already there, and I have to wrap my head around what that looks like. And timelines, it's up to the council. I can certainly let the board and tenants know when that date would be, and that would provide a little bit of...
So, we are going to be prepared to, we're going to be prepared to move on this by the end of May, if that's enough time?
Yeah, it would have to be. I can certainly let, I'll let the board and the tenants know that there will be a decision made by that time.
Thank you.
So, wait, can we add to that motion, a timeline by the end of May, 2018?
This is upcoming committee...
Oh.
This is not specific.
Oh, upcoming, there it is, sorry. Clear revision. All right, so, thanks for those comments duly seconded and by Counselor Ardell, Counselor Fosbrook, and then Counselor McKean.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So, the wording of this motion as drafted, is that going to preclude staff, and in particular, financial staff, from providing any additional information that they believe is relevant in us making an informed decision? If so, then I don't want to get too granular. I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, omitting something that is important by being specific to certain points and not others.
I think, I think it gets a broad-based motion. A lot is already in the report. Some refinement needs to take place on projections on capital, but, and even the downside if you don't do it, so, okay. Yes, Counselor McKean, sorry.
To Anne Marie, and thanks for the, the simple yes or no. Is there federal or provincial grant money for new builds of this type of housing?
Very limited. We receive about enough to do about four to six a year.
Thank you. Okay, so, Counselor Greenfield?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I guess I can understand why this amendment is coming forward. I do agree, it would have been beneficial to have had the report that Ms. Bruce Swizer took by a few days ago. It was a bit of time to reduce the numbers, but I guess I have a couple of fears here. One is that this may be precedent setting that any social housing, affordable housing project that comes forward to, even if it's replacing a roof, or windows, or doors, or whatever, are we going to go through this item? I'm not saying we should be careless, but could this indeed, you know, slow down the processes unnecessarily when our staff has already done that homework? The other thing is, we are dealing with people here, with lives. This, to me, is starting to become reminiscent of the Gable situation and the angst that was produced when we moved off the block. I mean, a number of these people, they realize these discussions were going on.
They could have voted against this one.
They may be becoming fearful that, well, hey, look, is the place where I live, where my family lives, where I've been for two or three years, going to be put up for sale? Right there, they're concerned. And dragging this out, or at least extending the period of examination, it's going to have negative effects with that. That's...
Well, thank you for that input, and I understand your compassion for the citizens that live in there. But I do think that probably we can be reassured that this is an acquisition, and that when you acquire something, you need to, you need to look under the hood, and that's what council is asking us to do, and look at that. So, I think that the delay could be, you know, a positive move in that way, as a process to when Gray County acquires property. So, that being said, let's go to the amendment and see if we support the amendment. All in favor of the amendment? I don't have, can I vote? Okay, all opposed.
Could I take a recorded vote on that?
Certainly.
All right. Counselor Pringle?
No.
Counselor Mackey?
No.
Counselor Barfoot?
Yes.
Counselor Burley?
Yes.
Counselor McQueen?
Yes.
Counselor Halliday, or Warden Halliday, sorry?
That's fine, yes.
Counselor Patterson?
No.
Counselor Hicks?
Nay.
Counselor Clumpus?
No.
Counselor Greenfield?
No.
Counselor Boddy?
No.
Counselor Wright?
No.
Counselor Fosbrook?
Yes.
Counselor Woodbury?
Yes.
Counselor McKean?
Yes.
Counselor Ardell?
Yay.
Counselor Echols? Counselor Bell?
Yes.
Motion carries, 50 to 40.
Okay, decision made.
Excuse me. I didn't think weighted votes. I thought it was just a one, it says in our book, you don't use weighted votes at a committee meeting.
Committee of the whole, and council, we do, at subcommittees and task forces, it's a one-person, one-member vote.
Thanks for asking the question. Thanks for the clarification.
So, now we need to vote on the...
So, now we need to vote on the motion as amendment. All in favor of the motion?
You just, sorry, there's some confusion. You just voted on whether there would be an amendment to the main motion, so now you're voting on the main motion, which is to receive the report and request staff to bring back that. The first part of the original motion was to transfer the assets, and the amendment was made to bring, staff bring back a future report. So, now you're voting on the main motion, which is two clauses, receive the report and bring back a further report.
It's on the screen now. Okay, everybody, all in favor of this motion? The motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. Good discussion. Okay, we're moving on now to delegations. Delegation is from Mike Ryan, who's the president, and Hugh Simpson, who's the first vice president of the Gray County Federation of Agriculture, and the subject is farm assessments and taxes. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and I'd like to thank staff for delaying the bylaw till the next meeting. That was appreciated by the Federation. And I'd also like to thank the treasurer for all the communication he's had with OFA when he came up with his report. I was here in January and talked about how farmers of Gray County are facing a 71% tax increase if ratios stay the same, and the shift in tax burden from, away from residential and towards agriculture due to that reassessment. As I said, the county has the opportunity to lower it below 25% of the residential rate inside the legislation, and we, last time I was here, we talked... And we...last time I was here, we talked about five different counties that had had a lower rate than 25%. Since I've talked to you, it is now seven. Last night, Oxford, with a banter of motions back and forth across the council table, after three motions, they came to a consensus on a ratio that they all could live with to gain a majority, to lower their tax ratio to 23% of the residential rate. What we're not asking is for farmers of Gray County to pay less tax. What we're asking for is a reasonable rate increase that farmers can afford. 71% over four years is a fairly steep incline. We've seen 22% last year, and we're going to see 13% this year if the ratios stay the same. When the tax ratios were created, there was hindsight into what tax burden different land classes have traditionally borne when these ratios were created. And in that creation, there was a range of fairness from zero to 25 for agricultural land given. We have seen some counties lower it below 25% before this last latest increase. But also, in designing the legislation, there was consideration to rapid market increases like we've seen in agriculture. The unfortunate thing was that only residential, industrial, and multi-residential were included in the restrictions that council can put on a rapid increase due to market valuation. Agriculture was not included in that set of subclasses that could only be raised in the first few years by 5% at a year maximum up to their current valuation, or 10% is the current rate, I believe, but Wepler, Mr. Wepler, could correct me if I'm wrong on that. And what I'm asking is for this county council to recognize that farmers of Gray County are businesses, and that although our businesses are counted in acres and not in square feet like some of our industrial and commercial counterparts are, that you afford to the farmers of Gray County the same respect that you're mandated to give industrial and commercial properties in Gray County. And that is why we continue to lobby for a 22% tax rate compared to residential for the agricultural assessment. And I would propose that even though that may be our suggestion, and that is a 3% increase this year to agricultural rate, that somewhere in the middle between the 25% and the 22% is a ratio that is bearable to both agriculture and this council. So with that...
Thank you, Michael. Is you going to speak, or is that your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I've just got a couple of comments to make, put an exclamation point perhaps on the subject. Thanks for hearing us. I just want to register for clarity that the GCFA and the 1,500 or so farm families that we represent, we understand the arithmetic here, and that from a county tax ledger point of view, this is not a lot of money. And it may appear to some who are observing this as inconsequential, but a decision by council to maintain the tax ratio as it is is in favor of the settlement areas or residential taxpayer and the ICI sector, and it does put a considerable burden on many individual farms, and some that I've spoken to near the tipping point. That means exiting. Our proposal, you know, makes essentially an insignificant economic change to most individual residential or individual ICI taxpayers, but a very significant positive change to farmers. So we are and our farm constituents are concerned that a decision like this really represents a shifting, notwithstanding that it may feel gradual. It's a shifting in Gray County policy away from its historical agricultural roots. And frankly, that in the absence of some county strategy that provides some guidance to staff and to, in general, the constituents of Gray County otherwise, it would be our advice to taxpayers in the farm community to become more engaged and remain vigilant on the subject. So again, thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Hugh. Okay, are any other comments coming from...okay, so do we allow questions? Any questions or comments from our council? Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So thank you very much for speaking to us today. With regards to the point 22 that was presented by Mr. Wepler, is it an ask that before it comes forward on the 26th of April, that maybe a report that also shows point 23 and point 24 could be also provided to... I'm not making such a suggestion. What I'm suggesting is that with Oxford County passage yesterday, it did take multiple conversations across the council table to find a ratio that was happy with each individual counselors. So if council thinks that there's a ratio somewhere in between, the 22.3, that a 3.5% tax increase due to farm assessment rise is not fair, or too much of a shift of it's a 0.4% increase to residential that that would cause, if they don't think that those numbers are right in your situation, then it is totally within your power to come up with a ratio that you think is fair. So I guess to you, Mr. Warden, is it a possibility before the 26th of April that our finance director was able to provide what point 23 and point 24 would look like if there is a feeling that, as Oxford went to a little higher than point 22, at least county council would have that ability to see what that would look like? Is that a possibility?
I think I'm being advised, of course, that we've already got the report. It could be information, and when that report comes back at point 25, it could be debated at that time. So...
The tax ratio, like, the tax ratio would not be affected what the mill rate to set to balance your budget would be what's affected, correct? Right. So my point is, Mr. Warden, is in that report that was presented by Mr. Wepler on the 22nd of March, it showed what point 25 looked like, and it showed what point 22 looked like. But my question is, could it come back in a simple form to show what it would look like at point 23 and point 24?
Point of order, are you speaking on behalf of the group that is presenting today that you are a director with?
Listen, we've been through that. You made your point, Mr. Point of Order, Mr. Warden. The counselor has made that point. I don't think it's in his purview to suggest that I have a conflict of interest, is what you did say. I have my own ability to determine whether I have a conflict of interest. Thank you very much. So my point, I'm asking for clarity, for information to this county council.
Well, I think, Counselor, when it comes back for approval of the minutes, I think we can, by a simple math, do our own progressions on that information. I don't think we need to do more extensive reports. It's there, and if the minutes are discussed, and I think options do exist at that time, and then we move on to the bylaw. So I think we'll have a fulsome discussion on it. It's been a good presentation today.
I guess, Mr. Warden, just a point of clarity, and from my information, I guess, can I ask the Director of Finance for that information?
I don't know. Perhaps he can speak to that, or do you need a direction from council?
I guess I need clarity on what you're trying to ask. Like, you know, it's 200 and, what, 34,000 is the county tax that's being shifted? You know, that's based on 3%. I showed in that report what it was, so simple math would tell you what 1% would shift. But if you're actually asking what does the tax rates and various tax classes, that would take some work, so...
Well, I think it's...thank you for that. I think we can move forward, Counselor McQueen, and do our simple math ourselves. I think, you know, the team here has made their presentation. There's some new information there. So I think that that's fine, as far as I'm concerned, what we have. Counselor Fosbrook, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. For the presenters, can you tell us which counties you're referring to and what rates relate to each of those counties? So Oxford just recently hammered out and arrived at...
Oxford and Lampton were the latest, and Ben's been at all those meetings, so he could fill you in on the exact details.
Okay, that would be great.
Great, yes, thank you for the question as well, yes. Actually, so this year, three additional counties lowered the ratio that had not done so in the past. Brant County at point 24, Lampton County...
Okay, so I'm going to note this, so Brant at point 24.
Yes. Lampton at 0.226.
Uh huh.
And yesterday, Oxford County at 0.235.
Okay.
And that would be in addition to previous counties such as Chatham-Kent, which has maintained 0.22, I believe 0.225, or 0.22 flat, one or the other, since the last assessment cycle, as well as Lanix and Addington, which I believe is also 0.235, if I'm not mistaken, off the top of my head, as well as the region of Durham, the city of Kingston, city of London, city of Hamilton, city of Ottawa. Can't remember the exact ratios in those ones at the moment. And Callahan, as well as the single-tier municipality has as well the ability...
So perhaps, Ben, you could send us an email...
It'd probably be easier.
Rather than trying to take notes on that. And I think that that's appreciated, you know, not to put you on the spot on that. So thank you for that. You'll send our CEO an email on that, then she can distribute it to all our council members. Counselor Echols, and then Counselor Wright.
Just towards Ben, any of the ones that you mentioned previous that haven't changed within this cycle, and they haven't changed, if I'm not mistaken, then the assessment increases would still be carried on the same effect as what you're saying it would be here? Because dropping it 10 years ago is not making any effect on the assessment increase today because they would have to drop it, and those five that you've mentioned, city of Ottawa, which does have a fair bit of farmland, city of London, Kingston, I'm not quite sure of that they have that much. But those ones that did it 10 years ago, being dropped, have no effect on what it is today. So there probably is three.
However, it is information that I think we should receive. And perhaps to Counselor Echols, when that rate change occurred, would probably be good information as well.
Sure, yeah, happy to include that. Did you want me to speak to the larger question of the impact of kind of maintaining the ratio through the new assessment cycle? I'd be happy to speak to that if...
No, I think that's...
Okay, I can include that in further information, or...
Yeah, if you want to embroider some more information in an email to our CEO, please do, and it will be shared with council. Okay, Counselor McKeen.
Just one question, and I guess it's to Kevin. If it was left the same, the way it is, Kevin, am I correct in saying it's additional $240,000 to Gray County the way it is currently?
It's a shift.
The shift of county tax would be $234,500. Okay, thank you. And to the presenters, and you're saying to me that there's 1,500 active farms in Gray County?
No, there's between 2,500 and 3,000, 2,800-ish. 1,500 are represented by the Federation.
So there's about, say, through the top end of 3,000 farms?
So in Kevin's report, he had listed how many properties there are in the county that are listed as either entirely farm or multi-farm portions.
So that's about 3,000.
So it's around 7,000, 7,700 properties that are classified as agriculture. So in my case, as a 600-acre, not a very large farm, there are about 20 agricultural properties that my enterprise encompasses that will be affected by an increase in rent due to an increase in taxation.
Thank you for that. Okay, any other...yes, Counselor Wright?
If I could, just one quick question, just so that...can you tell me what the assessment is in on your farm?
It's rather personal information, but last year, they increased by the average increase because there were not enough properties that changed hands for MPAC to set an increased value. But they are between half a million and 800,000 in our area.
So just because I don't understand, I mean, I don't know, but I could call MPAC and find out.
Yeah.
Do they assess the value of all the land, or just the property where your dwelling is, or your buildings are?
They would assess all the land and the buildings and anything that's on the property, and then classify what falls in the agricultural tax rate. What falls in the house and one acre is separately, and it pays full residential taxes. And then if there's managed forest on the property, and then there's different clarifications on hazard land or vacant land, if the person that owns it is not an active farmer, then sometimes those hazard lands are charged full residential rate, and sometimes they're farmed and charged agricultural taxes, depending how MPAC has it.
So it's pretty complicated.
They divide the property up and say this part classifies as agricultural land.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Good information. Yes, John?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a question to Ben. So along with those counties that you're going to send to the CEO that have changed the rate, you're also going to send those ones that have turned down the request? And I can think of Prenus Edward as one.
I suppose I could. It's a little harder to remember all the which ones, but I can certainly send you any ones that I've been a part of.
I'm pretty sure that can be done. Thank you.
Sure.
Good. Now you've got your orders there, Ben. Okay, so, all right. Thank you very much for your presentation. We've got some new information, and Ben will keep us updated. Thank you both, all three of you, for coming.
Thanks.
Okay, next presenter is Pam Hillier, Executive Director of 2-1-1, to review the 2-1-1 service usage statistics, gaps for 2017, and program highlights. Welcome.
Thank you very much. It's great to be back. So I won't have quite as serious a topic today, but good news, hopefully, for everyone. So I'm happy to present the update. So just a couple slides I'll give you on kind of the background, then about the service last year of what we've provided to Gray County residents, and then I'm going to just talk about a couple of partnerships that might be of interest that we're working on with Simcoe County. So last year, we expanded the 2-1-1 service nationally to 72% of the country, so it continues to grow. We're probably going to slow down at about 80% and not reach that last little bit, but it continues to move along. Just to remind you that in Ontario, there are six contact centers, and ours, based in Collingwood, serves what's called the Central East Region, just 12 counties, 1.2 million people. We have a provincial office that is the transfer payment agency that receives the funds from the Ministry of Community and Social Services. So 2-1-1 is funded through the poverty reduction envelope. These are the stats from last year. On the next slide, what's really important to note is that Gray continues to be the highest, number one, in the penetration rate in use, so residents' use of 2-1-1. So last year, we touched about 12% of the households here in the county, and that is truly thankful to the county staff in referring clients and folks in the outreach that happens there. So the top three that are in red, and I put them in red because those are the three communities where we have funding from municipalities and United Ways, and that funding really helps us be on the ground and working with staff through a number of things, and I'll touch on them later. But that really just shows that we're very doing very little with the other communities at this point in time. The next slide is really our capacity. A lot of folks wonder, how many calls can we take, those kinds of things. So these numbers, I'll just give you the highlights, is we handled 30,000 calls last year. That works out to about 2,500 a month. The average wait time in queue is 50 seconds, so that's pretty good. So that's kind of what we use as a ratio, and our staff are monitoring during the day, they add more staff, and depending on the peaks and time of year. Our average call time is 4.4 minutes, 47 seconds, though a lot of calls are very short, and a lot of them might be a couple of hours, actually. So, and the abandonment rate just gives our threshold of when people get lose their patience in sitting in queue. Our system allows folks to leave a callback number, which is an automatic system, so folks don't have to sit and wait if it happens to be a really busy point in time of the day. The next slide is why people are calling from Gray County. Number one is utility assistance. Two is housing, and the third is health, government services, legal, and so on. So probably no surprise to many of you. The next slide I haven't presented before, I don't think, and it's on the unmet needs. So these are the callers that didn't have the specific services they were looking for. We would have given them some options or some things to consider, and if you can see, the biggest gap was in health and related, that's half of those are dental services and the need for that support. And housing, most related to shelter services. So again, probably not surprising, those unm... So again, probably not surprising, those unmet needs and the committees and task forces that are working on solving some of these issues across the county. The next slide shows you the resources. And I'm showing you this as in Gray County. If you look down, while there's 438 agencies, they're located in 561 locations, delivering 662 programs. Of those, there's almost 1,800 services. So people, why people need 2-1-1 to help navigate and find those various things and what they're called in different communities. We talked about our online piece when I presented the directory work last year. And you can Google, and our database search results are the programs and services here. Last year, we increased our online sessions are called for the region up 21%. So that online space continues to grow. And it's not to be ignored because a lot of folks think we're just a call center, but the online piece and those access to the resources is really important. So just in summing up, I'm just going to speak to a couple of, some of the work that's emerging with 2-1-1 here in Ontario. And it's really around our emerging role in bridging the gap between primary care and community and social services. Last May, our organization had a visit by the premier, who had heard about our work with primary care and community paramedicine. And she was asked us to bring in our stakeholders. And we had a roundtable for an hour. It was really great. And we're hoping that'll have some impact on our budget over the next year or so. So really, where 2-1-1 fits in this slide is with the red, social determinants of health. So your income, disability, your food access, and obviously your housing impacts your social determinants of health. And so how we fit in is what we call, I'm showing you in this slide, is the equitable access to services. And what makes 2-1-1 different is we're cross-sector. And where some government programs equal, every resident gets the same amount, we try to match different services to help folks have that equal access to services. And I'll give you one example here is a real situation from last year. It was a gentleman referred from his physician, primary care. He had had a leg amputation and needed a prosthetic leg, which was over $4,500. So we worked with him and his family, did a financial assessment. He was referred through to assisted devices and get a portion of that money through war amps, got another portion of money, but he was still short. So we worked with local service clubs and wrote letters and got the balance in order for that to happen. So that's a good example of what we do that's different is across different funding agencies. So with primary care and their interventions in poverty, 20% of Ontarians live in low income, and the health inequities experienced by the population are quite evident. Social determinants of health play a role in increasing risk for the development of chronic disease, which costs our health system more money. A low income in particular is known to increase the risk of chronic disease incidence and mortality. And poverty is now seen as a key modifiable risk factor to be assessed and supported in healthcare settings. So the next slide is just showing you a very tiny poverty screening tool that's been developed at the provincial level. And physicians are being trained to use this tool in three steps. The first one is training them about poverty and the questions to ask. The second is that if they identify that their patient may be living in poverty or impacted by poverty, to do assessment on more chronic conditions. And the third is they're telling physicians, you need to give them a list of resources to help them. So envision physicians handing out lists of resources and phone numbers in a really busy care setting. So that's where 2-1-1 is coming in now. And one of the things we're doing, sorry, I'm behind here, is in the North Simcoe of Skokelinn, we're working with the family health team in Collingwood. And we've done a nine-month pilot, and our referral form's built right into the EMR, the electronic medical record. So if a physician asks a question, if a patient is struggling or is behind in their taxes, our form pops up. There's consent, and it comes in by electronic fax, and then we can follow up with these patients. And we're able to help a lot of those folks access those other resources, frees up the physician's time, and we're able to support together the long-term effects for that patient. The second example we're working on is with the community paramedicine program in Simcoe County. And for the last year, we've been receiving referrals from community paramedics who have done an assessment when they've gone out on a 911 call. And maybe it's hygiene, lack of food, poor living conditions. And then we receive that referral, we follow up later with the patient, and see if we can provide some additional supports for them. So last year, about 26% of those patients were able to add additional supports and hopefully deferred additional calls to 911 as a result of those additional supports. So I just wanted to show those are what you're going to hear more about, this kind of work where 2-1-1 is falling in place. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Pam. It's a valuable service, and I see it's growing, so congratulations on making it all happen. Yes, Councilor Fosbrook.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you very much for the presentation. The unmet needs in shelter, do you know the age groups we're dealing with?
We could pull that information out, yes. And we would work with, often it's due to transportation or location for some of those families, right?
I recall participating in a meeting probably 18 months ago, two years ago. And what came from that was the voice of a young adult, under 18, who made it very clear that he had nowhere to go. And what do underage youth, what are their options? So they don't have the transportation, and I'm not looking for you to solve the problem, but I think it's tremendously important that we continue to capture as much data as we possibly can so we can mine that data to address the most critical issues. So I applaud you for enhancing this information going forward. And whatever we need to do to support that endeavor, by all means, don't hesitate to let us know. Thank you.
I was commenting on that, if I may. The Ministry of Community and Social Services did invest a significant amount of technology into the 2-1-1 system in preparation for open data. And we have a business intelligence system that collects all of the information that we collect on callers, not their identity. And we can, in the future, we'll be able to feed that to stakeholders directly. And I have been contacted by the data consortium emerging here in the county. I can't remember the right name, but we will be part of that data provision. So we're looking forward to that. So very, very good points.
Yes, as a 2-1-1 is a referral agency, depending where the person is stranded at the time, there are agencies in each one of the counties that can look after that underage person. They don't look after it personally, as you know, but they are a referral service. And we do have, in each one of the counties, a system to look after those things. Any other questions, Pam? Yes, Councilor Ardell?
It's not a question, it's just a comment. I've known Pam for, I won't say how long, but she has been the director, and she's done a fabulous job in leading it forward into these new initiatives. And I just commend you on being there that long and me knowing you for that long. So it's been a few decades, or I'd say more than that. But yes, congratulations on being there still. Thank you.
Yeah, it was good to report, and I assume we'll get a copy of it. Yes, Councilor Fosbrook.
Thank you. Just to follow up, so what is the definition of unmet?
Depending on the situation of the person, what they need at that time. And it could be, they might have needed a walk-in clinic that's now closed. It would be unmet, doesn't mean they don't get a service, because we may refer them then to an emergency department, depending on their need. Some people are afraid to go to an emergency department, but if they need to go there, we give them whatever options there are. So that's at that point in time. That's why the data piece is really important. We need people that analyze the data correctly, and it's not misinterpreted.
Thank you.
That's a good response. Okay, any other questions, Pam? Okay, well, thank you very much, Pam, and continued success, and keep us updated annually or whenever you feel it's necessary. Thank you very much. Okay, it's 12:30. We're going to break for lunch, and then we'll come back. Thank you very much. Second warning. Doors are still moving in backwards. Been, we're going to go into committee hall, and I need a closed session to discuss advice solicitor, subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose pursuant to Section 239.2 of the Municipal Act 2001 regarding indigenous land rights. Do I have to put that on the floor, Councilor Burley, Councilor Ardell? Okay. All in five, all in favor. Yeah.
Is that favor or five, Mr. Warden? Is that favor or five?
Favor. One B. This is an interesting long motion. Shouldn't Randy read these kind of things? No, anyhow. That the, I put on the floor that the comments outlined in the addendum to Staff Report, PDR CW3917, be provided to the Saugin Valley Conservation Authority in response to the revised draft memorandum of understanding for plan review and technical services that the SCVA circulated to the county and to the watershed municipalities, and that council requests that the SCVA continue to provide both natural hazard and natural heritage comments for the county of Gray as part of its review of planning applications in order to maintain consistency with other conservation authorities and municipalities in Gray County, and that when providing comments on natural hazards and natural heritage matters, that the comments be provided in the context of provincial policy statement, as well as the county official plan and local planning documents for all planning applications, and that council supports the recommended revisions to the revised draft MOU and direct staff to circulate a copy of the report and the revised draft MOU to the SCVA and the member municipalities within Gray County that are located within the Saugin Valley Conservation Authority watershed, and to work with the SCVA to finalize an MOU for council's consideration. On the floor, Council Greenfield, Council Patterson. Okay, Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I apologize for you having to go through that long motion. So this matter was deferred from the March 8 meeting so that further discussions could occur with the Saugin Valley Conservation Authority Board. As indicated by Council Patterson at the last committee, the whole meeting, those discussions did occur. What the Saugin Valley Conservation Authority Board is essentially looking for is if municipalities want to have and continue with the Saugin Valley, continue with providing natural heritage comments, that a motion be passed by the county or the municipalities within that watershed. And then the board will consider that. And we're hoping then that will be considered and looked favorably upon in terms of continuing the practice of commenting not only on natural hazard but natural heritage matters as well. I won't go through the report. I presented that at the March 8 committee meeting. It's in the package. I just want to highlight a couple of things, just to jog people's memory. We are recommending some revisions to the revised MOU. Some of that is in relation to our request or recommendation to that the Saugin Valley Conservation Authority continue to provide natural heritage comments as well. And part of the reasons for that is that, as I mentioned previously, the county relies on conservation authorities to provide that technical review on both those matters, both hazards and natural heritage matters. Should Saugin Valley Conservation no longer provide this service, the county and the municipalities, we need to look at hiring an environmental expert or staff to provide this technical review as the county and municipalities currently do not have the expertise to deal with those matters. This could lead to an increase in peer reviews, could lead to, obviously, increased costs in terms of us hiring either environmental experts on consulting or retainer, or to have staff on hand. So there'd be costs associated with that. And we feel that from just a consistency, an overall consistency. Right now, we have four conservation authorities in the county of Gray. Three of those provide natural heritage and natural hazard review. So to have one conservation authority that doesn't provide that, we think it could cause some confusion. So we prefer to have a consistent framework across the county. And that's why we're recommending the motion as you went through, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Any questions on that matter? Senator Fosbrook.
Thank you. So Randy, you and I have talked about drainage. Is there any further clarity on that and the rule of the SVCA?
Yeah, nothing specific at this time, other than no doubt drainage and stormwater management is part of the review of the conservation authorities as well. So when they're looking at development applications, which primarily the focus of this MOU is commenting and reviewing on development applications, they would be reviewing the stormwater manager reports and providing comments, especially as it relates to potential impacts to the natural hazards and the natural heritage components of the property. So that is part of the review. I think some of the discussions that you and I have had, there's times where there's drainage matters that are outside of development applications, and who's looking after those. So that's probably another discussion for another day. But there's, but definitely from a development application, they are part of, is part of the review, is to look at drainage and stormwater management.
So thank you for that. What I'm hearing is that, as relates to drainage, this represents really no change, right?
Correct. And so basically...
From what they're currently doing and not doing.
Absolutely. Basically, what we're recommending is status quo. So recommending that Saugin Valley continue to provide natural hazard and natural heritage comments.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other comments from council? Seeing none, call the motion to accept this. All in favor? Opposed? So the motion is passed. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're into determining the items requiring separate discussion on the consent agenda. There's, pardon? There's a number of them there. I didn't add it up, so anyhow, there's from A to H. Anybody want to pull anything, or is it okay as we see it? Yes, Councilor McKean? Move the motion to accept the consent agenda. Council Pringle seconds the motion. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Thank you very much. That is passed. Okay, items for direction and discussion. Homeless enumeration verbal update.
Hi there. So back in the fall, I wrote a report, or brought a report forward to county council talking about our homelessness enumeration that was going to happen in the spring. This is the first time that we are doing an enumeration. And in that report, it talked to a little bit about what type of enumeration we would be using, when it would be happening, and how we would be doing it. So now we're actually at the point where we're here, and it's going to happen. It is going to be April 23rd and 27th. And I just wanted to give a bit of an update as to where we're at with that and a little bit about why, again, that we're doing it. As part of the update to the long-term affordable housing strategy, the province has made a vision that every person shall have an affordable, suitable, and adequate home. Some of their goals, like our own, are to have sustainable supply of housing, to provide an equitable system of financial assistance, to end homelessness, to provide people-centered services, to develop an indigenous strategy, and also to achieve evidence-informed systems. So this falls under, obviously, the category of ending homelessness. The province has a goal to end chronic homelessness by 2025. And chronic homelessness is defined as someone who's been homeless for more than six months out of a year. As part of our 10-year Housing and Homelessness Plan, it started in 2014. We did a lot of consultation in 2013 and 14. And we had four key strategic areas that were identified. And it was to sustain and create affordable housing, to look at transitional housing within our communities, to ensure that we have service coordination and collaboration, and obviously, looking at homelessness prevention. So our enumeration, we're calling it our county campaign targeting homelessness, which sounds a lot better than enumeration. It is April 23rd to 27th. It is a five-day campaign. And we're hoping that we'll get a better idea of what homelessness looks like in each of your communities, each of our communities. We know that it exists. In rural areas, it is different. We don't necessarily have that person that's sleeping out on the street, but we do have people that are couch surfing, that are maybe sleeping in sheds or sleeping in buildings or trailers that really aren't meant for 12-year... aren't meant for twelve year, uh, twelve months around the year. So the way that we're gonna do this is we've, um, have fifteen drop-in hubs throughout the county, and of course we're gonna have county staff available too, that if they're somewhere that, uh, isn't near a hub, that we would be able to go to them, uh, it's a short questionnaire and it's, and we're also gonna provide information on our services, it's confidential and it's volunteer, and all the information gathered is for also county and for the province, so we are mandated by, to do this by the province every two years, and, um, for the county, it'll, it will help us to better inform what we're going to do at the next step or the next phase of our ten-year housing and homelessness. So as part of this too, um, we didn't want it to be, thank you very much for coming and, and registering, but we have nothing for you at this point, so we, uh, have, and because it is volunteer and confidential, um, we're also doing a by-name list, and that by-name list, again, is voluntary, it's the person that does present, um, we can gather their information and we can hook them up with supports, whether it's somewhere to stay that night through the Y for, um, in emergency housing, and then we can start to provide some more services. We're also through our Chippy Funding, which is a hundred percent, um, provincial and federally funded, we're providing, um, um, funding towards outreach, homeless outreach worker that the Y is, has hired, um, and will be starting shortly in order to provide those one-on-one services and connect to, um, more services and supports. So a little bit about our plan, just briefly, um, it is the Bruce Gray Poverty Task Force, a housing pillar that's acting as a steering committee, um, we have identified, uh, through a mapping exercise partners, that we have somebody in all of our, um, all of our areas, uh, we've hired a coordinator, and again, these are through dollars that are provided by the province, we've trained staff, uh, through hubs, or we are training staff, there's a communications plan, uh, we're coordinating all the events that are happening for that week, and, um, also we will be reporting our findings locally and provincially, we're also going to be providing, uh, data analysis and policy program design with the recommendations. So just a list of some of our partners, these are our hubs, um, and then some of our other police, uh, partners such as police, hospitals, um, our own EMS, victim services, municipalities, uh, information and posters are, um, out to all of the municipalities and all of our partners, um, we have training sessions that are also happening this week and next week, um, so we are doing a media campaign with Rob, and then obviously we will be sharing back enumeration results with the public hopefully in late June, um, doing evaluation of what we would change and what we would do better the next time, because this being our first time, we're expecting there to be a lot of learning, uh, from this, in fact, um, some of the twenty homes campaign, uh, some of the, the, um, areas that have participated in that and have done numerous, uh, enumerations say that it's always a learning experience and that the first one you get some people and then the next time, one you, you end up with more, so it doesn't necessarily mean that you're not doing well, it's just meaning that maybe you're learning how to find people a little bit better. And then of course, um, we have to report back to the province by, um, October thirty-first, so I just wanted to bring this to the county's attention, uh, to councillor's attention, uh, that this is happening and, um, that we will be providing a report back, and, um, Tara has a copy of this presentation, so it'll be available on our website.